Good evening, everyone. I am going to call this meeting to order. The time is 7:30. This is the regularly scheduled meeting for December 9th. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Mayor Pro Tim Bliss.
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming.
Here.
Councilman Muir.
Here.
Counselor Robach.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Counselor Wright.
Here.
And Mayor Graff.
I'm here, thank you. The pledge this evening and the invocation will be led by Councilman Muir. I invite you to stand if you would like.
Lord, as we start this final meeting of 2024, keep an eye over this community. Help us to continue to give the strength to make the important decisions to keep the city moving forward. Please watch over our families this holiday season. No matter what holiday you observe, please keep us safe for the New Year's and start 2025. Please allow us to continue to use common sense and keep making the decisions to move the city forward and be prosperous in 2025. Thank you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up this evening, can I please get a motion to appoint Annette Boucher as our acting city clerk for the evening?
Your Honor, so moved.
Thank you. Can I get support?
Your Honor, support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those again say no. Motion carries. And then we have approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to move to add to the agenda, item 11.1, the Skynet IT Contractor Burcada, 2024 Door Access Renewal Budget Amendment.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those again say no. Motion carries. That is added. Are there any other additions or deletions? All right. Seeing none, we're going to move into presentation. This is from the Oakland County Parks. This is regarding Red Oaks Park or Ambassador Park in the design.
Good evening. For those that I don't know, my name is Melissa Pross. I'm the manager of planning and development for Oakland County Parks and Recreation. And I'm excited to be here tonight to give you a little bit of an update on what's going on at Red Oaks Park, formerly Ambassador Park. But I just want to start off by saying thank you so much to the city for welcoming this project. We have a very great longstanding relationship with the whole Red Oaks Park complex here in Madison Heights, and we're really looking forward to this new addition that just expands the opportunities for folks here in Madison Heights and beyond. So I believe that this is either in your packets or you've seen it. So I'm going to go through it relatively quickly, but if you have any questions, feel free to stop me, and I'm happy to answer them. Okay, so this is our updated site plan for the park. I guess what I want to first start out by saying, if folks aren't aware, is that when we, this is ARPA funding and some of our Parks and Recreation capital improvement funding that is going toward this park. When we started off, we had about a $3 to $3.5 million budget we were working on, which is a great healthy budget for a park redevelopment. But I think that our eyes here were a little bigger than our budgets, than our wallets, maybe. And we ended up designing a park that we were going to implement in two phases because we wanted to do even more than what we had initially thought about doing. So initially, we had a $3.8 million budget. But I'm happy to let you know tonight, if you're not aware already, that as soon as our County Parks and Recreation millage passed on November 5th, our Parks and Recreation Commission at the county met the next day, and we asked them if they would please allocate the funding so that we could do the full build-out of this park at one time and not have to come back. So it is now a $7.2 million park redevelopment project, and it's going to be fantastic, and we're really excited to get to work early next year. So these are some concept renderings. This will essentially be the view, if you're kind of standing in the middle of the park and looking back toward 13 Mile, toward the parking lot there, you can see this very cool Earthscape's playscape on the right and what we're calling the top garden on the left. The porch garden slash restroom building kind of there in the upper left, and I'll have a little more detail on some of those things. And then a really nicely expanded parking lot with some nice green stormwater infrastructure there to capture runoff, but like a really friendly, exciting, welcoming entrance when people come into the park. And then if you kind of turned around and looked toward the back of the park, this is the high-level view of what you'd see. So the swing area, we're going to beef up a little bit, but that will stay there. A hammock garden that we're going to put in. We're going to beef up the sledding hill a little bit, make it just a little higher, a little more exciting. I'm going to add some play elements off of the side of that as well. And kind of mid-park, we are going to build in what we're calling a reflection garden. I know that there were some memorials in the park, and this is a place where people, you know, like to maybe go and reflect. So we wanted to make sure we incorporated kind of just a quiet space, maybe some neat artworks, some places to sit in the middle of the park to just have a quiet moment, meditate, take a break from your day. So that'll be kind of in the middle of the park. And then this is kind of around the backside of the sledding hill. So we are going to wrap the pathway back around there, and you can see we're kind of building up the backside of the sledding hill with some stone to secure that a little bit as we build it up. So for entries into the park, we're going to have two pedestrian entrances, one on either side, and then obviously the main parking lot entrance. The area on the right there, we're calling it the drop-off plaza. So when you come in, there'll be a place for, you know, it could be buses. It could be just people dropping off their kids or their families or things for a picnic. You'll have a nice area to do that. That's nice and safe and welcoming, right there adjacent to the restroom. What's not on this map is that we are going to keep the existing southwestern entrance through the neighborhood. That will stay there. We've also been talking to the apartment complex, the owner of that, and we're looking at potentially bringing that sidewalk that dead-ends down into the park or maybe building a new sidewalk from kind of mid, in the middle of the apartment complex down. So it would come in right where the playground is, and they seem really excited about that. So we're happy to work with them on that. So the playground, we're going to be expanding. I think we're adding, yeah, about 85 new parking spaces. And again, no curbs, just parking blocks, and all that runoff will be directed into bioswales and rain gardens in the parking lot. You can see that kind of big retention area there on the left side of the parking lot that we're going to add. The entry plaza, I talked about a little bit, just some precedent imagery to show you what that might look like, bike racks, some places to sit if you're, you know, waiting to meet up with a friend or just need a place to take a rest. For accessible features, so our sort of thought for this park from the beginning is spend that we wanted it to be a multi-generational facility, somewhere that people of all ages and abilities could come and hang out together or on their own. So obviously, we meet ADA standards. That is the minimum requirement. So we are doing that. But we are looking at areas where we can, you know, identify and utilize the principles of universal accessibility to kind of go above and beyond. So we'll have accessible pathways throughout. We're going to have fixed amount adult changing tables in the restrooms just to make it easier for people of all abilities and their caregivers to maybe stay a little bit longer at the park. We're going to have port-in-place surfacing throughout the entire play area. And then all of our seating, you know, we'll have lots of accessible seating options throughout the park as well. So the area that we're referring to as the porch garden is essentially the restroom building, but a nicer restroom building that is a place that on the other side of it, kind of looking out over the park, there'll be some swings, some Adirondack chairs, a place you can kind of sit, get out of the sun or the rain. And it'll be raised up a little bit, so it'll kind of look down over that great lawn area and the tot area down into the park. So we'll have some Adirondack chairs there. We'll have, obviously, the restrooms, a water bottle filling station, charging stations, and then lots of native landscaping throughout the whole site. So this is our concept imagery for the building. You can see the swings there, which we thought was a really nice touch. There's some screening, kind of the areas that back up to the neighborhood. It is far away from the fence, but just as a added level of privacy and screening between the homes and that area of the park. Yeah, the restrooms will be, like if you see on the bottom left where the swings are, the restroom entrances are just around the corner to the right there. So they're off to the side. So the play garden, which is what we're calling the main playground area, is probably the part of the park that we're the most excited about. Like I said, it's going to have port-in-place surfacing throughout and some artificial turf as well, which is also accessible playground surfacing. We're going to do some topography in there, so we're going to create kind of some earth, mounded earths, you know, areas kids can kind of run up and roll down and play around on. The playground companies we're using are Duncan and Groves, Earthscape, and Columbia Cascade. So they're, you'll see the imagery, but they're a little different than kind of your stock standard playground, and that's what we're really excited about. We think a lot of people are going to see this and want to come here and experience it. Lots of seating throughout, lots of shade throughout. There's a green storm infrastructure you can see there as well, and we're going to have a cool net bridge that kind of goes across that. So we're kind of intertwining the green storm infrastructure and the play elements together. So here's some of the imagery to show you what the playground will look like. We'll have two of those towers, so that image in the upper left is pretty much what the play, the large play structure will look like, and that is the net bridge that we're going to have. And then again, some additional kind of log climbing structures. That spinning disc is really cool, easy to transfer onto and spin around on for kids of all abilities. The log steppers that we are going to color in that blue-green colorway for a little uniqueness, and then some, a long scramble up the backside. And then on the other side, over closer to the restroom building, is the area that we're calling the tot garden. So this is kind of a little, kind of circular play area down there. You can see that kind of loungy bench seating that wraps around. We want to do something like that around the tot garden. So if you're there with your kids for a while, you've got a comfortable place to sit and hang out, have a picnic. And it's just going to be kind of ground-level play elements, some log steppers, some log climbs, and these cool little huts that kids can run in and out of. So then toward the back of the park, we're calling that area the hollow in the hill, but this is where we'll have our, what we're calling the hammock haven. So it'll be some permanent hammocks that will be in place there. And then off the side of the sledding hill, we're looking at adding in a straight tube slide and a climber there just as an additional feature that kids can play on back there. Like I said, reshaping the sledding hill just to, you know, make it just a little bit more exciting and a little more, maybe get a little more speed. And then the reflection garden I mentioned. We haven't figured out exactly what that's going to look like. This is just concept imagery, but some sort of unique art feature that's, you know, not intrusive to the site, but just as a place to stop and reflect. And we like those stone step seats. We thought that was a neat touch. So from a timeline standpoint, we are right now wrapping up our, we've wrapped up our 60% design drawings. We've got our purchase order, our contracts in place with Di Maria, who's going to be our construction manager on this project. So our ARPA funds are secured. They had to be secured by the end of this year, which we made. So we are going to, we'll be at 90% drawings in January. The playground equipment will get ordered in January. It has a very long lead time, so we want to order that very quickly so that we can get it in. We will probably go out to bid sometime in early to mid-February so that we can start construction essentially as soon as they can mobilize in the spring. I'm hoping by April, but it might be May. That is where we're at. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone on council have questions, comments?
Yeah, I, so construction beginning in spring, is it going to, do you think like a full season, a full year? What's the timeframe for?
I'm, optimistically, I think that the bulk of the construction could get done before the end of the year. I'm guessing we'll have some restoration and site cleanup to still do in the spring.
Okay. That's what I figured. Nobody should get too excited for next year.
Yeah, next year it's going to be a construction zone. Yeah.
Your Honor, so will the park be partially open or how would that work?
So we won't, I won't have an exact answer for that until we actually, Di Maria bids it out and we get our contractors and the schedules in place and see how they want to work the site. I am guessing it will be closed, closed completely for the season, for the year.
Okay.
Yeah.
What kind of access will the hill have?
Mr. Soltis, did you have something you wanted to say?
So we're actually, let me see if there was a picture of that.
Going to be accessible for all?
Yes, they were, I don't know if the picture shows it. It doesn't. But I know that they were looking at a grading pattern that would allow for access up the backside. They thought that they could do that in a way that they could, that you could get people up safely to the top. Yeah, from the backside. Not the side that the climbing wall and the slider on, but on the other side.
Yeah, Your Honor, thank you for being here and sharing this information with us. It looks like a wonderful project. But I want to ask you, what about the golf course? Do you know anything about what's going to happen with that?
What about it?
I don't know. Can you tell us?
I mean, is there, is there a specific question? The golf course isn't going anywhere.
I wasn't sure if it was staying or?
The golf course is staying. Golf is on an upswing right now. COVID was very helpful to the golf industry, I will say, and all of our golf courses are performing very well right now. I know we did talk two years ago, maybe, about possibly getting rid of that golf course and restoring that as a large park open space. The public was very clear that they did not want to see us do that. We've actually been using that facility quite a bit as a teaching facility. We do a lot of adaptive golf down there with some of our partners. So we're trying to bring in more and more people to use that site because golf is not going away anytime soon. So it's running great, and we're, we have no plans to change it at this time.
Yeah, no, I enjoy the course. It doesn't enjoy me because I'm not that good, but you know.
Same.
Your Honor.
Yes, please.
A quick question and a comment. The question is, the bathrooms on-site, that is very big for me. All my kids are older now, but I remember trying to wrangle them, and if the park didn't have an open bathroom, you weren't staying there. So what are going to be the hours that people are going to be able to expect for that bathroom?
The bathrooms to be opened? Yeah, that's a good question. We're, it's probably not a surprise to most of you, but this sort of foray into more urban park spaces is a little bit different for us. A lot of our county parks have gates. They open and close, you know, in the morning and at night, and we have hours specifically. We're not, there's not going to be a gate on this park. It will just be open as a city park. So we're still trying to figure out what the hours will be. But we are, in a couple of our parks, installing remote locks on our restrooms so that they, you know, automatically lock at a certain time of night. You can get out. You just can't get back in. So that's something that we've been looking into. So I think we're open to talking more with you guys as we get into that and seeing what hours you think makes sense. But we also want to make sure that people can have restrooms available when they're at the park.
Yeah, absolutely. And our park rangers are obviously used to stopping by that park. So that might be an additional mutual agreement that we can come to to-
As a checkpoint. Yeah.
As a checkpoint to make sure that we can keep them open more than otherwise.
Yeah.
Because I think if the park could conceivably be used, if the bathrooms could be open, that would be ideal, I think, for every resident who's going to visit there. Nothing worse than walking to the back where the bathroom is and the bathroom not being open.
Agreed. Yes.
Especially with the screaming toddler who needs to go. But the comment that I have, I just wanted to highlight that this is amazing, and I would be remiss if I didn't highlight the work of the late County Commissioner Gary McGilvery in kickstarting this project off and ensuring that, you know, it's still going to take a season, but ensuring that this gets to the residents of Madison Heights. I know he would have loved to see these concept drawings finalized and, you know, looking forward to celebrating on his behalf when we get this thing, the ground broken and this thing live.
Agreed. Yeah, we'll do a nice grand opening celebration of some kind, probably in the spring of '26 when it's all said and done. Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I just had one more question about the pavilion slash bathroom slash, was it considered to be a stage two?
It could be. It is designed that it could serve that function, yes.
Okay, and you guys, that's something to deal with after it's done as to how that part will operate, or do you guys-
Yeah, I think we're, I mean, we don't have any specific plans necessarily, but we do have a large staff of programmers that want to get out into the parks and put on special events. And whether it's, you know, music or a small play or a student performance of some kind, I think we're looking forward to working with the city to see how you'd like to help us program that space.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Your Honor, just one follow-up on that. My apologies. I was sure I'd have thought about it before when I was speaking. Might be worth having you attend or a representative attend our arts board meeting.
Oh, that'd be great.
Because you're looking for art in that shared space and you're looking for potential programming and partnerships. It doesn't have to be early in the year. It could be after you've started construction.
Yeah.
But we have a very vibrant arts board, and I'm sure they'd love to collaborate.
That would be perfect. I would love it.
Anyone else? Yes, please.
So on the, on the side, on the backside where there's the golf course, how far do you think it is from the golf course to, I mean, is that like a fairway over there where it's on the backside by the trail over there?
Like the length from the golf course to?
Yeah, to the trail that goes around there.
Oh, it'll be relatively close. I mean, we will, there's some wet areas back there that we're not going to mess with, but the trail that wraps around the backside of the sledding hill will be relatively, you'll be able to see the golf course from there, but.
I just worry, you know, I know some, some people that play golf, you know, they're probably as bad as I am, but you know, they're, you know, they could maybe hit the ball, might go into the park area, you know, and that's a concern of mine. Do you know if they would put up like a net or something like that on that side?
We can look into that. We have been working with our staff that's at the golf course at Red Oaks, and they didn't think, they thought that the pattern of play there, that it wouldn't be a big concern. But obviously, if something happens or it becomes an issue, it's something we can address. We do put up netting in other places.
Is there anyone else? Any other comments? All right. Well, thank you for coming in and presenting it. This is, this is great. And I think if you're going to go to the arts board, you might also want to talk to them if there's going to be the opportunity for a stage about doing some kind of concerts or other performances there as well. I think that, I think that would be a really good compliment to our band shell. So thank you again for coming out and doing this, and I'm excited to see what we can, what we're going to have next year.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right. Next up, we have meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for the public to speak. Ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, that you address your comments to me, give your name, address, any affiliation with the city. And with that, I welcome public comment.
Good evening. My name is Denise McCarthy. I'm here on behalf of my dad, former councilman Richard Clark. A few months ago, I was fortunate to meet Mr. Sherman, and he mentioned that he would email me Monday, April 8th, 2024 council recording. That was the day my dad passed away, and you guys had beautiful words to say. And that day was a huge loss for myself and my family. My dad, he was my dad and my hero, and he was gone. But thank you, Mr. Sherman, for sending the recording. I pass it on to my family. And I knew my dad made a huge impact in the city with his love and loyalty he gave to the citizens. He was a rare person in politics, not because he was my dad, but because of the honest person he was. And not many people can pass out Clark bars at the polls. And we did find some downstairs, and we tossed them. But myself, my brother, my family want to thank you all for the heartfelt and kind words you said about my dad and my family's pop. And again, thank you. You touched our hearts, and we appreciate it. And I apologize for the delay in coming here, but I made it. Merry Christmas and happy holidays. And the playing cards, there's a game in there that my dad loved to play. So enjoy playing. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? All right. So I'm going to close public comment, but I'm also going to say thank you for letting us, letting the city, have that time with your father. I know that this was important to him, and before I ran for council, he was someone that I talked to a lot, had a lot of words of wisdom. So thank you for sharing your dad with us, and thank you for the cards. All right. So I've closed public comment. Next up, we have the consent agenda. We have item three from the Director of Public Services, field use agreements with Madison Heights Soccer. Item four, Director of Public Services, purchase of QuickView Sewer Camera. Item five, the CDBG yard service, 2024 Lawn Service Contract Amendment. Six, the City Planner Resolution to Adopt a Vision Zero Policy to Eliminate Fatalities and Serious Injuries Resulting from Crashes on Madison Heights Streets. Number seven, from the City Clerk, the 2025 Council Meeting Calendar. And number eight, the City Council Regular Meeting Minutes of November 25th. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those again say no. Motion carries. And then we have communications from the Director of Public Services, a priority waste update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to turn it over to Dan Day. As you'll recall, six months ago, council requested that a update be given. Given the rocky start, we have the transition from GFL two priorities, so Dan is here to give that update.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Happy holidays as we enter into a fun season. I'll start off by just giving an update. I know with the last meeting, I kind of described the fleet shortage that we were dealing with at the time. At 47% of the fleet was down day one. They had to go out for repairs, some for permanent asset downing. And today, we're at where we expected to start with about 40 to 50 of those total trucks down, knowing that 40 to 50 was going to be the number we walked into needing to permanently down for safety or mechanical issues beyond repair. So we're in a really much better position asset-wise today. That's, that flip of a switch, I'll say, it kind of felt different in September and October. We entered into November, and it felt a little rocky at times in some communities due to the large volume of yard waste that we saw, we're still dealing with because of the late drop this year. But there's a better feeling now as we move forward into the down time of the season with no yard waste. We can do more work. Our team on the operations side really moved mountains to get 230 or 240 trucks that were down back up in a very timely fashion. We took that very seriously, that when we saw what we had, we had to act quickly and act permanently on the fixes. What you should be seeing is better quality trucks on your roadways, not leaking fluids or trash outside the bottoms or through the backs because we're permanently fixing the ones that we're keeping. The next wave will be, you know, repainting. We've already seen the branding with stickers being applied, but painting, that's a three- or five-year process, so don't expect to see yellow trucks too soon because you have to down a truck for at least a week before it gets done with all of the many moving parts that you have to disassemble and paint. And you also don't want to bring it back and have the paint go away because then you wasted your efforts. We're also going to be, over the next three to five years, replacing any assets that are on the lower list of life cycle. So some of the trucks that you may see in and around your community, those ones that need to be put down, we're going to put those down, scrap them, and bring in replacements. And we already had placed our order for 2025. We begin our budget for 2026 in the second quarter to half point of the year to know what we're going to do for '26. So when we walked in July 1st, we amended our order for next year, knowing that there's going to be significant changes. All of your trucks have our cameras and our GPS tracking system on them. So our logistics driver coordinator in our office can watch the service as it's occurring on the road in real time as well as pull recorded video. Trucks have six, up to six cameras on each vehicle. That covers all four sides. The hopper for the automated loads above, as well as a cab for safety for driving purposes, just to make sure that our men and women are driving safely, not distracted, with seat belts and everything. So it's nice to report that all of your trucks have that on there. So what that does for us is we're able to move into this next wave of- So what that does for us, as we're able to move into this next wave of service, is we can identify root issues that are out there and the cause of that issue, as opposed to guessing what it is, you know, the he said, she said, from the resident's perspective of what they saw to what we think actually had happened. Now we can blend that together and have like a full picture of everything from stop, start to finish. It's a great asset to have in those question of gray. The Madison Heights DPW team will be trained on our portal, I believe it's on Thursday? Thursday, they have their meeting, and what this will do is increase their ability to see and track complaints as they are coming into their office. They can report them, they can see what we're doing on our side, and see the resolution, and it stays as a living, breathing document for its life. So these tickets, as we call them, let's say we missed your trash at your house, we will be able to say with the picture, yes, we in fact did. A driver overlooked it because maybe a car was in the way, or an obstruction, or maybe just, you know, was focused on something else, another vehicle coming the opposite direction, driving safe. We can say, yes, it was missed. We can also identify when it wasn't, and that will get recorded into that portal, so we can say to the resident to remember that our trucks start at 7:00 a.m. and they finish when they are done, please get your materials out in a proper time period. We implemented this, and I said, I think I said it at the last meeting, in 2022 with our contracts and at the time, all of the trucks. And what we saw was a decrease in callbacks, when we have the information to show the resident the good or the bad, our fault or theirs, it allows us to give that first call resolution so that they're not wasting any more of their time calling us, or taking times out of their days to check what was going on. So I'm happy to announce that we do have those cameras, your team will be on that portal now, that's that final wave of this, of this plan of implementation for the community as we come into 2025. From our side of things, I pulled some data over the last six weeks. For our call volume, significantly lower over the last five to six weeks, we're only getting five to ten calls per week, five on average to being the missed stop reporting. So if you look at the total number of touches, the reservice commodities, five calls to ten calls a week is a very, Six Sigma level service. We're happy to say that we want to continue that progress forward, obviously, the portal, his team, getting in the portal will help with the communication and reporting those instances quickly, as well as track his, like, the repeated issues. So by having that two-way conversation, his team can provide some color to something maybe we're unfamiliar with. At the beginning, I remember there were some hiccups with the park services, and it was getting them on the right schedules and not really understanding why it was set to where it was. Sean and I got together, he got with his team in depth, and we reverted back to what has been the previous service of the parks, where they're serviced on the day in which we're operating. That's except for one where we do a couple-day service. And that seemed to help out us, because we're not sending a truck on Saturdays where there's more foot traffic with families and children, and as well as, we can track if we touch those parks. If they're overloaded, we need another cart to get them through the weekends and whatnot. So doing those things together in collaboration has been integral to our success. I thank all of you, your residents, Sean and his staff, for your understanding, your patience with us, and your collaborative nature, because we couldn't have gotten to where we are today without that. We know that there's still room to improve, we always like to be a hundred percent perfect in every community that we service, knowing that it may not be attainable, but it's a darn good goal to set. So we're looking forward to the progress over the next six months and continue that path forward. And a couple other things that we're trying to dial in on the service side to give the residents more information is updating our, we call them communication at the curb tags, like little tags that can go onto an item that can be maybe hazardous and not collectible, or prepared improperly and not collectible. So that way, it reduces the call volumes back and forth, it's going to give a little bit more detail. The one that we have now has basic information, but we're going to look at a way in 2025 of improving that communication to allow for more education for a resident in those cases that it comes out. We don't run into it very often, but it's still often enough that it's a focus for us in 2025. So those tags will be put on the item, if it's uncollectible, why it's uncollectible, and of course, they have our phone number to reach us. In, I think it was September when I was here, our hold times were not great for residents trying to get in touch with us. It's one thing that we didn't like that we had to suffer through at the time, our phone systems, as I described before, collapsed on itself with the call volume in the first week of July due to the previous service provider limping to the finish line and us taking over. We have implemented three of four phases of the new phone line, the fourth phase goes in just before the new year. This will allow us for more, I don't know the IT jargon, but more cool stuff on the background, utilizing AI components to route calls faster to the person that they need to reach. So if you called into our office for the City of Madison Heights before, you're going to go to the City of Madison Heights LDC right away, as opposed to a prompt system or a live answer system. So speeding that process up for all, allowing for off-ramps, you may be on your lunch break and you want to enjoy your lunch, so you set the call. Allow for a callback, it tells you when you're in the queue, when you should get a callback on, so you can make yourself available as well. So just again, make it more user-friendly for the residents as they call in, and take less time out of their days for something that may be our problem. So again, that's kind of the update that I have, I again, want to just reiterate, thank you all for your patience, understanding, and collaborativeness throughout this process. Like I said, we would not be where we are today without that, and we look forward to a prosperous 2025 together.
Thank you very much, appreciate you coming in, is there any questions from Council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
First, I want to thank you for coming, two times, coming before City Council, that puts you ahead of your predecessor and well ahead of DTE. So I appreciate that, first and foremost. The question I have, though, I want to understand, you said the tickets are down, and that's meeting your SLA, you said Six Sigma levels. What is that in relation to other communities, you know, tickets per amount of residential customers? And then, I'd also like to know what your response time is versus other communities, is that below, and then how does that factor in with your SLA?
So every one of our communities is unique in its design, response to a ticket, for an instance, we have a bar of less than twenty-four hours, it could be much faster. The communication through the portal speeds that up dramatically, so in New Baltimore, that was one of our core customers, our second one to sign with Priority back in 2019. When they would call in or send a text message or an email to myself or my colleagues that were watching over service, you know, I could be in a meeting, I could be unavailable, I could be dealing with a sick child at home, who knows, or I could be sick myself, and not get that message fast enough to get that message out to the team to recover. So now, as your DPW staff receive these phone calls, what we've seen is an increase in response time by at least forty percent. So we may get two missed stops the same day, if it gets reported before noon, we may get to them still at 3:00 p.m., because we have that ability to see it live and act faster, because you have somebody that doesn't leave the office until all of the City of Madison Heights trucks are off the road. So if there's one that pops into the portal and the truck is still operating and is capturing that commodity, we could see that collected same day. I forget the second part of your question, I apologize.
So you said response time is within twenty-four hours is your SLA?
Yeah.
Are we meeting that?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, yeah, there's always some variances, right, that push us out beyond the twenty-four hours, but we always say within, by the next service day that we receive.
Okay, and then all of that data is now going to be in that portal, so, you know, DPS Director Ballantyne is going to have access to these stats in a dashboard, and then those stats can be provided in like a quarterly update to Council?
Absolutely, it could be quarterly, it could be weekly, it could be daily. The nice part about that portal is you can extract data from it live, it's a very, I say Dan-proof tool through Microsoft Teams, I can't even mess it up. It will run a, and his team will be doing the training on Thursday, and you get ongoing support. So as you move into this, you can run a report from that sheet, you can go by date range, or you can do by its entirety, and it will tell you how many incidents by type, it'll tell you how many incidents were resolved in a certain period. So it allows for Sean to give a real meter to our service, like really, really see where we're standing and not have the emotional highs and lows. If you get a very hot call of missed stop, you know, that can rise the emotion and think that Priority may be failing in that instance, whereas it could just be, it was a reoccurring issue that hadn't been rooted out. So that'll give us a really good score for yourselves, for, you know, when a resident comes up and asks you a question, Mr. Ballantyne can provide that. So those, those measures, the reports and dashboards can be pulled at any moment.
Awesome, and just, Your Honor, could we take, from a staff perspective, could we take the video section from this meeting, as well as the stats coming from the portal after the training, and push that on to the city's social media, so that our residents can be aware of the progress that has been made over the past six months?
I think that's a valid request. Any other questions, comments?
Yes, yeah, thank you for coming, we appreciate that. Mark and I know about the, your predecessor, the one before you, they always tried to strong-arm us, but that, now it's over with. But in terms of, what I understand, the contract is going to end next year sometime, and so do you see an opportunity for you to negotiate again? Or are you trying to raise prices up?
Yeah, I would love the opportunity to come in, I talked to Sean, yesterday?
Today.
Today, about your contract status and, you know, what the city's urge was and feelings were. I always prefer to sit down at the table and negotiate, on an extension, I think you get more out of it than going to bid in some, in a lot of cases, because there are things you can talk about freely and openly to really bring the service to a whole. Tie in some things that are maybe wish list items that, in a bid, maybe aren't so beneficial, because we have that relationship, so absolutely. We would, we've been working with a number of our communities, off the top of my head, sixteen communities renewed with us in this first six months. Some of them had expiring contracts, some of them were coming close to an expiring contract, others wanted to rework the contract language. And so we worked with them to extend anywhere from three to five years out, depending on their comfort levels.
You said sixteen municipalities?
Correct.
You work with, excluding Warren, right, because they're on their own?
Yeah, we don't service the city of Warren, I'm just saying of the seventy-three GFL communities, sixteen of them renewed in some capacity with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other?
Your Honor, I first, I just wanted to say thank you, because I know it's been said a couple of times, but last time you came in here, there were a lot of angry residents who wanted some answers and needed to understand why their trash was sitting out for seven days, and I think the feedback we got at that time, it wasn't sufficient, if I'm being honest, but the feedback you provided today was significantly more sufficient, so thank you for that. I did also just want to ask for the recording, and also, we could push this along with that information, what's the number for folks to call if they still are having issues?
We have two numbers, local 586-228-1200, and then toll-free 855-WASTE65, or 927, okay, 927-4365?
Sorry, I wasn't trying to catch you up, that wasn't like a trick.
We can probably get that from DPS.
Yeah.
Those are our two numbers, we also have a very interactive website that allows the residents to go to a City of Madison Heights page. So if you go to prioritywaste.com, go to Services, Municipalities, there's a button to select City of Madison Heights, and that will give some basic level of service, like when does compost season end, when is my recycling picked up, which is weekly, but some people still ask the question. Maybe an acceptable items list for recycling, as well as a contact us form, so they can interact with us through email if it's not an urgent need or request.
And just one more follow-up, and I promise I'm done, more lighthearted, though, trash cans, and DPS, Sean, maybe you can help me with this, too. Do they go on the street, on the curb, and for the big GFL cans, do you put them backwards so they can just grab it, or put it forward? Which way should you place it?
I believe they should be going back on the curb, off of the roadway, the handlebar should be facing the house.
Okay.
So as we dump or empty the can, if we are using an automated vehicle, which right now, only one of the vehicles in the city is more of an automated, it's a manual side load, but it still needs some person interaction to hook the bar. Eventually, we will transition to a more automated service, we believe that's safer, it's better, it's more proper, but habit is handled to the house, is our saying.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions? Yes, Mr. Ballantyne?
Yeah, maybe Mr. Sean Ballantyne can answer this, or yourself. For the holiday season, when it's over with, and the residents have Christmas trees, what are we going to, what is the plan for that?
It's actually a service that the DPS provides, we come by with our staff and we chip them, starting Christmas week and going through, I believe it's the second week of January.
Anything else?
All right, so I appreciate you coming in, I do have one question. Years ago, when I started on Council, one of the things I was interested in was some kind of a food compost pickup. And so we're doing a pilot project right now where we can take our food compost over to DPS, and I was just curious if that was something that Priority Waste was looking at.
So food composting is a growing urge, not only in Michigan, but also in Indiana, there's a City of Indianapolis overall is going into a subscription organics service at each door that residents would subscribe into for that level of service, they would get some type of container, the size hasn't been, I guess, defined quite yet, but that's one way to go about it. In Michigan, though, a lot of the compost sites accept food scraps and yard waste, in some, with some caveats. Tuttle Farms, Spurt, and Country Oaks are the three that come top of mind, that they can actually go into the yard waste, and it gets composted with the yard waste, as opposed to landfill and put into the ground. That's a more economical way to do it, because you're not adding on an additional truck, which would be an additional service, extra disposal cost. I know Ferndale ran a pilot where it was carts in public areas that they could use. While it had its benefits, it also had its down spots with like insects and the smells in those parking lots. I believe that they got away from that, but I'm not entirely sure. So there are definitely ways to discuss it, Southfield is one that's encouraging residents to use it with yard waste. I believe Farmington Hills is talking about it to introduce yard waste with food scraps. So there's ways to bring that in slowly without driving the budget down, or up, however you look at it. But yes, we're open to looking at those alternatives together, knowing that it's a growing request from a lot of communities.
Okay, so I'm going to clarify my question, it was having, instead of garbage pickup, it was picking up food compost. And the reason that it couldn't be done was, or that it wasn't being done, was because when you have yard waste, it is dry, and when you have food waste, it is wet, and it was a matter of too much wet in a garbage truck or what have you, would rust it. So are your trucks, can your trucks pick that up, like, is that something that you would be looking at?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Like I said, Southfield is already in that process right now, including, where you're using our same vehicles.
All right, awesome, thank you. Well, I appreciate you coming out and answering all our questions and providing that update, and we will get this information out to our residents with the correct number as well. So thank you so much, and we hope to see you in maybe six months or something, again, just to get another update, very much appreciate that you are coming out to this.
Absolutely, thank you all.
All right, thank you. All right, and then next up, we have the Bid Awards Purchases, the first from the police chief, it is the purchase of body worn cameras, in-car cameras, and cloud storage for digital evidence.
Our current contract for Axon in-car and body worn cameras with software and storage will expire in fiscal year 2026. As part of this contract, the police department co-termed a separate agreement for cloud storage, which has proven to be a key solution for storing and sharing digital evidence, including materials for prosecutors and FOIA requests. Axon now offered an upgraded camera system with enhanced features and. Axon now offered an upgraded camera system with enhanced features, including live stream monitoring, license plate reading technology, reduction, and sharing capabilities, and auto tagging for better record keeping. Axon proposed a five-year contract starting in 2025, which will lock in the 2024 pricing schedule. The total cost for the five-year contract is $690,000. The original contract was negotiated at $707,310.41 by staff, but a review by the Information Technology Advisory Committee led to further price negotiations, allowing us to get the price down to $690,000. Based on the revised information, ITAC and staff recommend that city council approve this five-year contract with Axon Enterprise not to exceed $690,000.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion from council to approve?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the five-year contract with Axon not to exceed $690,000.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor? Support.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
A couple of things. First, I want to bring the chief up. What I think is really cool about this and in reviewing the detail about it at the ITAC meeting, this is pretty hands-off for our officers. As they pull into the parking lot, if I understand it correctly, it will automatically upload this footage to the cloud. There's no manpower dedicated to it, and those records are automatically saved and preserved should they be needed.
Yes, that's, that's correct. So when, when the patrol vehicles pull into the parking lot, it's uploaded through the station's Wi-Fi. That's for the in-car video, for the body cam footage, when they place it on the dock, also the same effect. So yes, it is very hands-off, very, very hands-free, and it is paired up with our Clemis system. That's our, our records management system with the county. And Axon works directly with Clemis, so that when the officer responds to a call, it identifies that the officer is on a call and a certain incident number and pairs it up automatically. It's, it's a feature that saves us a lot of time.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Your Honor?
Yes.
If I may also, I, I want to first off, thank our police department and the staff for the forward thinking to be able to get this done. Pseudo-monopolies like Axon has, the prices only get higher, and it's just the reality that we're living in. And so taking advantage of end-of-year pricing discount was by far the smart move. All of the savings that we get from the automation, even if we wanted to do it on our own, we would be spending more than this contract value. And ITAC specifically pulled that data and ran through what each of those things would cost, either from, from the cloud storage and the manual personnel and all of that and what it would look like. And the, the fact that we were able to get this locked in four or five years, I think is, is incredible. I'm also told that our city manager is quite the negotiator, and absolutely crushed it on the front end of that. And I also want to thank ITAC, our Information Technology Advisory Committee. It's about eleven years old. When we started it, I proposed it off of a city in California because there weren't any around us. And even today, there are very few in the state of Michigan. And how cool is it that the, that the end cap of this is staff negotiated the discount down to $707,000, and then ITAC helped to get it down under $690,000, that additional $17,000 saved because those professionals literally pulled out their calculators in the meeting, figured out what the actual raw cost of these items were, and then we gave the recommendation based off of what it should cost, which allowed our staff to come back and say, our professionals in ITAC said it should cost this. And we were able to come to the table with additional $17,000 savings, which, you know, hats off, our city manager wrote a lovely note to all of ITAC. But I also want to make sure to publicly thank my peers on ITAC because that's incredible work, and I just wish every city had an ITAC to be able to benefit. Body cams were first mentioned in a public meeting at an ITAC meeting. And so to be this many years later and to have this locked in for another five years on an agreement that, it sounds like a lot of money, but is considerably lower than piece-parting this out and lower than we'd be paying had we just waited six months to renew this, just hats off to all involved. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Council.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If those can't say no, motion carries. All right. And then from the Director of Public Services, scheduled replacement of vehicle number 525.
The fiscal year 2025 budget includes the second phase of funding to replace vehicle 525, which was a 2004 GMC shipper truck funded through the solid waste division. The existing truck is in very poor condition and has a score of 43, warranting priority replacement. Therefore, staff recommends that council approve the purchase of one forestry truck and equipment as quoted by Altec Industries of Waterford in the amount of $223,902.75 through the MyDill Cooperative purchasing program.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor? So moved.
To approve? To approve?
Yep, I'll move.
All right. Is there support?
Your Honor, I'll support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the scheduled replacement of vehicle 525. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, just a quick note, that's about $75,000 under budget. Good job in allocating that.
Yeah, all right, thank you. No further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If those can't say no, motion carries. And then we have our new addition, 11.1. Mrs. Marsh, you want to do that?
With the renovation of the city hall complexes, security measures have been drastically improved. Part of the improvements included a key fob access to secure areas of the city using the ver, I don't know what that is now, the door access key fob system by Alcom of Commerce Township. The initial purchase of the security system was part of the renovation contracted cost. However, moving forward, the renewal will need to be allocated as part of the ITAC line item budget. After review, staff has determined that the best allocation of resources would be to acquire a five-year license of the total cost of $16,983. By purchasing a five-year renewal, the city will save a total of $4,182 over this five-year period. Therefore, there are two motions that need to be made. A motion to amend account number 101-228-818-3000 in the amount of $16,983, and that does take a super majority of council. And a motion to approve the contract renewal with Alcom for a five-year Verkata renewal in the amount of $16,983.
All right, thank you. Can I get the first motion, please?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move we amend account number 101-228-818-3000 in the amount of $16,983.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If those can't say no, motion carries. And then if I can get a motion for the second as well, please.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the contract renewal with Alcom Inc. for a five-year Verkata renewal in the amount of $16,983.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor? Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If those can't say no, motion carries. And then we have ordinance number 12 from the CED Director, ordinance 2201, the rezoning for PRZN 24-0132275 Stevenson Highway. This is the second reading.
The applicant, Detroit 75 Kitchen, on behalf of the property owner, requests to rezone one parcel of land at 32275 Stevenson Highway from M1 Lot Industrial District to MUI1, Mixed Use One-In District. The subject parcel is approximately one acre in size and is approved with a 3,300-square-foot commercial building and the associated parking lot. The property is located on the west side of Stevenson Highway, just north of Whitcomb, and the applicant is here again tonight, as he was at the last meeting. Staff recommends that if city council wishes to adopt ordinance 2201 upon second reading, that they make the following motion. To waive holding a public hearing as permitted by Section 15.07.2D of the zoning ordinance, and in recognition of the Planning Commission's recommendation, approve and adopt ordinance 2201 rezoning 24-01 upon second reading. Approval is based upon council's finding that the approved rezoning is consistent with the council's goals of supporting economic development opportunities along the Stevenson Highway industrial commercial corridor, is consistent with the objectives of the city's master plan, is compatible with the surrounding uses and zoning, and does not negatively impact aesthetics and infrastructure, traffic, or surrounding land uses. It is found that approval meets the criteria for the amending the zoning map as established by Section 15.03. B.1-9 of the zoning ordinance.
All right, thank you. Can I get that motion to waive and approve, please?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Given that Planning Commission already had the public hearing, I move that we waive the public hearing and approve ordinance 2201 on second and final reading.
As stated by the, reasons stated by the city manager?
Yes.
All right, is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Perhaps we can give the applicant, since pending this motion, they'll be open in three weeks, perhaps we can give the applicant the chance to tell the residents about the business that's coming in? Well, pending the vote of council.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you for your consideration, both myself and my brother Chef Mike. We really appreciate your time. For those that are not familiar, we're from Detroit 75 Kitchen. My brother and I started this family business restaurant ten years ago in Detroit. We serve sandwiches, really good sandwiches. Chef here makes awesome food. And we're really proud of the work that we do, and we're excited to bring that to Madison Heights for our first restaurant, really, because we've been operating out of a food truck for the last ten years. So we appreciate your consideration. We'll be right over there on Stevenson Highway between 14 Mile and 13 Mile, so please come and say hello. We'd love to see you guys.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I just want to thank you for hanging in there for the entire meeting tonight. Appreciate it.
Don't worry, Sam.
All right. All right, thank you. If there's no other comments, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If those can't say no, motion carries. Welcome to the city. All right, and with that, I think that concludes our regular business. I invite closing comments, starting with Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to wish everybody a happy holiday season, for those that celebrate Hanukkah or, or Kwanzaa or Christmas. Have a very safe, happy New Year, and be careful putting up your Christmas lights if you're undertaking that in the near future. And that's about it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Pro Tem Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. Echoing those sentiments, I wish everybody a happy holiday season. Hope all the parents enjoy the last remnants of your kids being at school. I know I will over the next couple of weeks. And, you know, obviously, enjoy the time with loved ones. We will not have a meeting until, until January, so council will be off, but our, our emails will still work, and so if you need any of us, feel free to send us an email, other than if your, your trash isn't picked up because you got the numbers for those. So we shouldn't see those in our email. But that's it, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Counsel, right?
Thanks, Your Honor. As Mayor Pro Tem Bliss just mentioned, yeah, this is our last meeting for the year, so as we close it out, it's, it's been a fast year. Like, we did a lot of fun things. We had a band shelter, we had revenue in the heist, partnered with the fire department. We had a lot of fun things. Juneteenth, I can't believe this is our last meeting of the year. I just want to, just close it out by just reminding everyone to like, check on your neighbors, check on, on your friends, check on the folks who you haven't said hi to in a while. There's a lot of folks who are grieving in their own ways and going through different scenarios, be it the loss of a stepparent or a parent or, you know, a neighbor or a friend. So this time of the year can be very, very hard for a lot of people, so I'm very happy we have a co-responder program to kind of help our police department with that. But just, just remember to be kind this time of the year, remember to give people grace, and understand that folks might be dealing with some stuff that you aren't aware of. They probably are, so just keep that in mind, and until next year, be kind.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman?
Happy holidays to everyone. Thank you, Your Honor.
Ms. Marsh?
Just happy holidays for everybody. Really excited about everything we did in 2024, but looking forward to 2025, and we are going to be having a, try to do the community conversation virtual meetings again. Hopefully, they're more successful than last time. And our first one will be in February, where we're going to elaborate on this Ambassador Park plan to the residents, so look for that.
Thank you. Anything from the clerk's office?
Happy holidays to everyone. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Same, happy holidays, and if you enjoy yourself putting up your lights, seek medical treatment. Thank you.
Ms. Blomming?
Just happy holidays, everybody, and have a good New Year. Camille?
Yeah, happy holidays. Also, I wanted to ask the seniors, do we do a delivery for breakfast, or, excuse me, on Christmas Day?
I don't think so on Christmas Day. I didn't think that we did.
Is something we could put together real quick? We'll think about it.
I don't think that we have time to put that together in a week.
Other than that, that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody. Yeah, this, this meeting is the last of the year. Our next meeting is going to be January 13th. I want to wish everyone a safe and healthy holiday, holiday season, whatever your holiday is, and we'll see you all in the new year. The time is 8:34. This meeting is adjourned. Good night.
I heard you seek medical attention.